Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to the March 2nd, 2021 City Council Meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. Item two is invocation and pledge, and calling Councilman Johnny Dodd to lead us in our invocation and pledge.
Fair walking, stand, relax, the X. Pastor Mercer from Saragallo. Church please come up and lead us in a word of prayer.
Come to thank you this morning for your goodness. Thank you for your kindness, your love and grace. You put your soul upon us. We ask now with your presence, the power of your spirit rest in this place where we can know the joy that only comes from you. We ask for the wisdom, the knowledge, and that which you can provide for the City Council. The mayor and all the administrators, we have to give them the direction, the oneness, the unity that they need to take this city forward. And thank you right now for what all they've done and what they're doing. Continue to bless. Keep us in your name and Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is roll call, and Sam, you'll see that all council members are present with the exception of Councilman Buchanan. Approval of the minutes from the February 2nd council meeting. Those minutes were sent out. There are no additions or corrections. Minutes will stand approved as read. No proclamations today. Item six is invitation for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak in any item on first reading, raise your hand at that time, you'll be recognized. First reading. Consideration of the ordinance to amend FY21 budget ordinance. Capital outlay note, $1,759,152 to acquire vehicles for JPD.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, councilmember.
Good morning.
As the mayor described, this proposed ordinance would amend our FY21 budget, the original ordinance that you all passed for this year. And the purpose of the amendment would be to recognize and include capital outlay funds totaling $1,759,152 in the capital outlay fund, and to appropriate those funds to acquire, to purchase, I believe, thirty-one police vehicles. So that's the purpose of the ordinance. I will tell you, there is another agenda item related to this transaction that's later on on the agenda under new business. It's an authorizing resolution that's required, but I'll address that when we get to that point on the agenda.
All right, any questions for Mr. Arnold?
Motion to approve.
Second. All right, we've got a motion in a second, so before we get to discussion on that, this is an item on first reading. So I will open up the public comment, public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of, or opposition to, raise your hand and be recognized.
Good morning, Mayor. Yes, if I may, I do have a question.
I'm gonna close the public hearing and then let you ask questions.
Okay.
Seeing none of those, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Now, Councilman Brooks.
Yes, good morning, Mayor and Council. If you recall during our last meeting, I had asked that the Budget Committee take a look at this item, and would like to hear from the Budget Chairman if he would.
Yes, I'd be happy to address it. The Budget Committee took into consideration the financing option that was presented originally last month, which was to use Ford financing. We looked around, shopped with Ford, as well as looked into Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund. That's what you see now. We went from a 4.25% interest rate down to a 1.49%, and I believe we'll be able to hit that rate, maybe get a little bit better. So we ended up saving about $70,000 over the course of the loan term. We've had some, I've provided the council with information that the Budget Committee reviewed. So you should have all that available to you on the different financing options, as well as a breakdown, a line item breakdown of the equipment that was gonna go into the police cars. We, the Budget Committee recommended to proceed with the Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund financing.
Thank you.
All right, you hear the questions?
Mayor, I would just like to thank Chairman and Police Chief and his staff, and you also for working, because like I said, it made a difference that we took this time to look into this. So thank you for your leadership and your leadership also in working together, making this happen.
Thank you, Councilman.
Great.
Any additional questions? We have a motion in a second. No further discussion. Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight, zero.
All right, next item is a consideration of an ordinance to amend Title V of the municipal code regarding the municipal procurement code.
Okay, thank you. Again, an ordinance on first reading for your consideration. Tennessee Code annotated 12-3-1207 authorizes municipalities to use, under certain circumstances, competitive sealed proposals to purchase goods and services rather than competitive sealed bids. So that's what this ordinance is about. If you look in Section 1, what we would be amending our current city code by adding a new section, Section 5-602. And that would, again, would allow for the use of competitive sealed proposals to purchase goods and services rather than competitive sealed bids when the council determines with the city that it's advantageous for the city. So the rest of Section 1 just outlines the details and logistics and the steps that you have to take to arrive at that point.
Mr. Arnold, this does not affect the language currently in Title V?
This is an addition to.
Okay, thank you.
All right. This is an item on first reading, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of, or opposition to, be recognized. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion by Brooks, second by Pickens. Any further questions or discussion?
Mr. Arnold, am I reading this correctly, and maybe the city attorney can weigh in on this? Does the board, being the council as defining this document, do we approve, do we have to move to enter into this proposal process each time that we do that, or is this approving it moving forward?
It's approved.
Okay. So this gives us a tool that purchasing can use to go out and seek proposals rather than bids? Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight, one. I'm sorry, eight, zero.
All right, item three is a consideration of a proposed budget amendment, JPD Act 21 grants for $55,000.
Right, so grant for the police department, 100% grant, no local match.
All right, any questions? This is an item on first reading, so open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, be recognized. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, Wallace.
Several motions, several seconds.
Who is the, I got Wallace is the second.
You got Pickens or Cisco, you take your pick. All right, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight, zero.
All right, item four is a consideration of a proposed budget amendment, JPD voca grant Safe Hope Center for $18,281.
This grant does require a 20% back. And what the city's gonna do, we have a seller property revenue account that's tracking above our budgeted numbers this year, so we're gonna dedicate some of that excess revenue for this part.
Any questions? This is an item on first reading, so open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of, or opposition to, be recognized. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion by Dodd?
Second.
Second by McKelvey. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight, zero.
All right, item five is a consideration of a proposed budget amendment, JPD insurance recovery in the amount of $13,935.
Yes, this amendment would recognize the revenue. We received reimbursement revenue from insurance recovery and would appropriate that to be used for the repairs.
All right, any questions? Again, item on first reading, open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, speak in favor of, or opposition to. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight, zero.
All right, item six. Consideration of a proposed budget amendment, groundskeeping capital in the amount of $19,000.
Yes, this proposed budget amendment would affect our capital outlay fund, and it would recognize a $19,000 donation from the CRA to the city to allow us to purchase two mowers that will be used in maintenance of properties that the CRA owns.
All right, any questions? All right, item on first reading, so open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, be recognized. Seeing none, close the public hearing. And do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A second, any further discussion?
This doesn't affect any other obligations that the CRA currently has to the city. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight, zero.
All right, item seven is a consideration of a proposed budget amendment, CARES Act reimbursement in the amount of $86,609.09.
Last month, the council approved recognition of CARES Act reimbursement and the appropriation of a certain amount of funds, $916,936. That was approved last month. You'll hear that on second reading here in a second. We mentioned last month that there was an additional $86,000 that we were expecting to be reimbursed for to get us up to our total allocation. So we have now received the additional funds, and that's what this budget amendment recognizes.
Any questions from council?
So that, the ultimate amount, the sum, is that the $1,003? And we don't expect to receive any more?
I think we're hopeful to receive some more.
Keep hope alive.
I think, from the state, I don't think so. I think the Senate is taking up the new stimulus package, which does have direct federal payments to local governments, populations above 50,000, so.
We'll stay optimistic.
Yes. All right, any additional questions on that? All right, this is an item on first reading, so anyone wishing to speak in favor of, or opposition to, be notified, be recognized?
They promised to have it by this week.
Of the new stimulus? Yeah, hopefully. All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Wallace.
Any additional discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight, zero.
All right, item eight is a consideration of a proposed budget amendment for city start grants, second stage, in the amount of $20,000.
Yes, there's no match on this grant. The council, a few months ago, approved the initial city start grant, and this is phase two of that grant.
All right, any questions from council? All right, this is an item on first reading. So anyone wishing to speak in favor of, or opposition to, be recognized. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A second, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight, zero.
Item nine is a consideration of an ordinance to close an unnamed alley between Lane Avenue, Pine Street, Alice Street, and Sim Street.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
This request represents our continued effort to close and abandon those alleys that exist within the city limits of Jackson that never were improved. They were just right of way that was dedicated at some point in the subdivision process, and they were never improved to be used by the public. So a lot of times, these alleys are running through backyards of people's properties and really serve no public interest. So this item was staff-initiated. As it was recognized, it was an unimproved alley that served no public interest and that presented to a planning commission, and they have recommended approval of it to you.
Any questions from council? This is an item on first reading, so anyone wishing to speak in favor of, or opposition to, be recognized. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight, zero.
All right, stay right there, Sam. If you want a second reading. Item one is consideration of an ordinance to barricade an unnamed north-south alley between East College Street, East Lafayette Street, North Liberty Street, North Highland Avenue for the purpose of closing it to vehicular traffic. This item was passed on first reading. Have a motion by Councilman Dodd. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by McKelvey. Any additional questions or discussions? Council, please vote.
David, I don't have a vote.
David, you gonna vote, David?
Okay, I see it now.
Okay, all right.
All right, motion passed seven, one.
All right, item two. Thank you, Stan.
Thank you.
It's a consideration of a proposed budget amendment to recognize insurance recoveries for damages at City Hall in the amount of $14,584.77. This item was approved on first reading.
So moved.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight, zero.
Item three is a consideration of a proposed budget amendment to recognize CARES Act reimbursement and appropriations in the amount of $916,936. Go ahead.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussions or questions? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight, zero.
Item four is a consideration of a proposed budget amendment to appropriate funds for the solid waste fund in the amount of $43,750. This item was approved on first reading.
So moved.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Cisco? Any further questions or discussions?
Can we have a timeline provided to the council on putting this together?
Yes, sir. We're meeting about it tomorrow. I'm hopeful that we'll have a plan done by the end of the week, maybe Monday, and I'll make sure that's communicated out to everyone.
All right, appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
All right, any further questions or discussions? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight, zero.
All right, new business. Item one is consideration of authorizing resolution, capital outlay, to require vehicles, to acquire vehicles for the Jackson Police Department notes $1,759,152.
Okay, thank you. Might take just a minute to speak to the process moving forward on the capital outlay note. It is a little different than the process related to the lease purchase agreement that we did for the fire department a few months ago. So we'll have a second reading on the ordinance. Will be required that you approved earlier in this meeting. We'll have a second reading of that. We have to have a comptroller's office, Department of Local Government Finance approval of the capital outlay note. So we've got that request prepared, and it'll be ready to go as soon as you all approve the second reading of the ordinance. Don't anticipate any problem. Generally takes about 10 days, from what I understand, from when they receive it, to get that approval. And then the other thing that's required is this authorizing resolution, which you'll consider today and hopefully pass that today, and that's what's in your packet. This is the authorizing resolution actually for the actual capital outlay note, not to exceed $1,759,152. The capital outlay notes will be five-year notes that kind of parallel the useful life of the assets. The rate right now is, in this resolution, is not to exceed 1.49%. This is a competitive capital outlay process, and, you know, interest rates are uncertain at any given time, but we're hopeful maybe we'll come in less than this not-to-exceed amount. We'll have to see. Included in that 1.49% is an annual fee that goes to the Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund, 15 basis points. It's included in that interest rate projection already, so it's not on top of that. Just trying to hit up a few key points. If you look at page three of the resolution, source of payment and security, these notes would be backed by ad valorem taxes and guaranteed by ad valorem taxes. If you look on page four, Section 13 talks about the approval of the Director of Local Government Finance that I addressed earlier. The remainder of the language in this resolution is kind of standard required language.
All right, any questions on the resolution? Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
The motion's our second?
Second, Wallace.
All right. Any further questions or discussions? Council, please vote.
Passed eight, zero.
Thank you, buddy. Item two in our new business is a consideration of a resolution to create the Jackson-Madison County Tennessee Bicentennial Committee.
Hey, good morning, members. There were some changes from the original one that was sent out in the packet. Sorry about my two additional corrections. Some would say haste makes waste.
This is the corrected version that we have.
Yes, sir.
Move the approval.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Thank you.
Motion passed eight, zero.
Item three is a consideration of a contract for aviation insurance.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We received, we sent 25 invitations for this, for this package. We went to nine markets. We had eight no bids. And I emailed you their responses as to why they did not want to bid, just in case any of you had questions. The only bid we received was from the Buchanan Insurance Group at $27,855 a year. And this is, the price has increased by $3,400 with this contract. But the good thing about this is, the last one was a three-year contract, so we held that price firm for three years. Now they're only guaranteeing rates for one year because of Stacy Stein. We'll tell you the reason for that. But we've had very good luck, and this is for our three helicopters and even with the FLIR unit that's attached. So Stacy's here to explain this further, if you have any questions.
So the aviation market is a very specialized field, and there are limited carriers. Right now, it's a very hard market, which means competition decreases, and some carriers have chosen to close their doors, and others become more conservative in what they quote for. They may specialize in something different than helicopters, and so some may choose not to quote helicopters anymore. And so that's kind of what we're looking at. Helicopters are a higher risk than some of the others. And there's been some contributing factors that have made this market hard, and that just means there's been a multiple large losses. So I know back in the spring of 2020, there was a lot of, we had those heavy storms, and just in the south in our region, there were five tornadoes, two in Tennessee, Nashville and Chattanooga, that hit airports, and so that has affected all of this, and that's why we had limited bids.
One of the things I want to question you about, I understand you said you had three airframes, is that correct, to insure?
Helicopters, we have three helicopters.
Actually, you have only two helicopters and one airframe that you use for parts, correct?
Right, one's on the ground.
So is it necessary to insure that? Because if a tornado comes along and tears up the other two helicopters, that airframe is gonna be nothing for nothing other than parts anyway. Can we save anything by only insuring the two, and just keep the one airframe uninsured?
Sure, we have, the quote takes that into account, so it's only for ground-only coverage, which reduces that premium. My understanding is that they have, there's been money put into that one that's not flyable. And so the thought was, if we were to be hit with a tornado out there, and that equipment that has been bought and paid for already is damaged, then we would have the coverage for that, to replace that, that coverage that's already been, or that equipment that's already been bought.
Can you tell me what type of equipment has been done on that particular airframe that's been used for parts?
I can.
Councilman Pickens, it's my understanding that we don't want to carry insurance on the hull at all. That hull was acquired through the government program, so there was no taxpayer money involved in it.
And that's the way we acquired the other two aircraft, is that not correct?
Yes, we, the majority of the equipment through the helicopter program was free through the government program. However, we did repaint one of the helicopters and striped it. We invested in the FLIR system and a camera system that's on there. The majority of replacement parts, we get through the federal program. So I think long-term, looking down the road, they are wanting, we have a part-time employee that retired from the Memphis Aviation Unit that is a mechanic that can build a helicopter from ground up. Long-term, they are wanting to rebuild that hull, acquiring all this equipment through the federal program, so there's no cost, and utilize that particular helicopter for a training helicopter. So.
So at that point, then it would be worth insuring?
That's correct. See, on these helicopters, once they reach a certain amount of hours, we have to send the motors back in.
Right.
Now, that's where we incur some cost.
Yeah, I do too, because I'm on a plane, so, you know, I understand when you get to that annual TBO or time between overhauls, when you hit that number, you've got to pull that engine off and send it back, and that can be an expensive process.
And I think the average on that is maybe three to four years, depending on the number that we fly it. So if they can rebuild this hull, and we can use it for training exercises, that reduces the number of hours that we have on our aircraft in service.
Correct, okay.
We can remove it completely if that's what you guys want? It's not an issue?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So Chief Wazir, you're saying that, that one that we're not using, it does not make sense to have insurance on it? Because the parts are coming from?
Not at this time. You know, once we, if we get it to 60% or 70% of equipment in it, then at that point, but right now, it's currently just a hull, and there's no need to insure it. And then we can reevaluate that, maybe in the future budget. But currently, we just only need to ensure the two functional helicopters that we have in service. So we need to rebid, actually a different bid now, since we've taken that off.
Let me ask Stacy a question before I answer that. When does this insurance expire?
March 26.
March 26. We won't come back to council until April.
What we can, I mean, it'll just reduce the amount. I don't know what the amount will be.
I'm trying to figure out the time.
To find out, it will reduce the amount that we're looking at now.
Why don't we table this then, and we'll work with the existing company and see if they'll carry us over for a month?
Okay, let's do that.
Okay.
Did I motion to table, Councilman Dodd?
If I may, before we have a motion. In the air of transparency, the chief and I have talked about a insurance company that specializes in insuring aircraft, a company called Avemco. I don't know if we have checked with them and entertained a bid from them. I can tell you that's who my airplane is, and I'm not endorsing them. I'm just saying that they are a company that specializes in that. So if we could get a good rate for insurance by going through them, maybe worth looking into. But they're a big national company. I think they're located in Frederick, Maryland.
Can either you or chief send me their information?
Yes, I can. I had had a conversation with Stacy, and... I had had a conversation with Stacy and relayed that information to her just this week, so she was, it was my understanding that we'd already, yeah, I called you, and it was mine.
There was some eye movement, that's what y'all had.
Stacy's been busy, but I called about the insurance, and it was my understanding that it had already been bidded out. You said the helicopter had already been bidded out, and I was under the impression that we already had the insurance company that we're using on, but I thought that was only on two helicopters. So, you know, we don't need to insure the hull.
So, you know. Second to motion to table.
Was it a proposal, Stacy?
We've got a motion and a second to table.
Who made the motion?
Councilman Dodd made the motion. We have a second from Councilman Pretty to table. To get more information on the rebid process and insurance carryover. Any further discussion on the motion?
Can you guys copy me in on the correspondence? I wasn't looped in on the, it was my understanding there was some information sent out about the, this process and the reason, the reasons why. Could you make sure that I'm copied on those moving forward? Thank you.
But I will get that, that insurance information that...
You know, it may be one of those things that will, it will help us out, it may not, but it's certainly worth investigating.
Yes, thank you.
All right, any further discussion on the motion? All right, counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight zero.
All right, item four is a consideration of a contract with JEA for internet services.
Brian Taylor is here, and he will explain this to you.
Morning, Mayor and counsel.
Good morning.
This is a, we currently are at the end of a five-year contract with JA. This is for internet services and point-to-point connection services where we do not have infrastructure connecting the buildings. Fire stations are a good example, where it's not financially feasible for us to run our own infrastructure, so we utilize JA. This locks in these rates for five years and increases our speed and allows us, as we move toward cloud-based software on a lot of our other departments, it'll double our speed overall throughout the city to help assist with that as well.
All right, any questions from counsel? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion?
So we will, we will be saving some money with this, right?
Yes, we will both be reducing our overall cost and doubling the speed in a lot of cases when we renegotiate this with JA.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight zero.
Thank you. Item five is a consideration of a contract for audit services.
Proposals were received from seven, well, from four companies. We had four no proposals. We interviewed, the budget committee worked with the purchasing department to interview these firms, and they were Crossland and Associates in Nashville, Tennessee, Malden and Jenkins in Chattanooga, Thompson Price Scott Adams in Cleveland, Tennessee, and Alexander Thompson Arnold here in Jackson. The committee interviewed, first of all, all proposals. We looked at everything, then we shortlisted that to two. The top two were Malden Jenkins and Crossland and Associates. We had a go-to meeting with both of these firms, which are outstanding firms, and either one of them would be a welcome addition to the city. But we interviewed them, we ranked them, we scored them, and the company that got the top, the most votes was Malden Jenkins, and their price for the first year is fifty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. And from what I understand, we're currently paying seventy-nine thousand four hundred dollars to ATA. Paul Taylor, if you would like to add anything to this, we thank the budget committee for joining purchasing in this interview process.
No, we, as Ms. White has described, we reviewed all the proposals that were provided. A lot of great candidates and opportunity for the city, but we felt that those that we shortlisted, and after interviewing those, that Malden Jenkins would have been the best, would be the best fit for us moving forward. They also have some additional value that they add by providing city employees with continuing education, as well as the council as well, if we're interested in sitting in on some of the courses that they provide throughout the year. So I think we'll be pleased with Malden Jenkins.
Move the approval.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Wallace.
All right, any additional questions from counsel? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight zero.
All right, item six is a consideration of a contract with USIC, eight-one-one location services.
This would be a contract, USIC specializes in, if someone calls eight-one-one before they do any excavation or digging, this is a company the ticket would go to. They would come out and clearly mark the city's infrastructure, the buried fiber optic infrastructure, and mark it to make sure no damage is done to it, and we don't get any damage to our infrastructure. It's a twenty-five-dollar ticket fee. If it's an emergency ticket, it's seventy-five dollars. The rate is very good. It's a company that's been utilized by JA before, and our department especially, Mark has been working very hard this year to update all of our maps, make sure they're accurate, and make sure that those, those buried fiber optic cables are properly marked each time a ticket comes in.
All right, any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second? Have a second, Councilman Dodd? Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight zero.
All right, thank you. Item seven is consideration of board appointments, Commission on Aging, the reappointment of Marie Law and Richard Ramsey.
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second? Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight zero.
All right, next is Jackson Housing Authority, the appointment of Mamie Hutcheson to replace Clarence Boone.
So moved.
Have a motion by Pickens.
Second.
Second by Wallace. Any further discussion?
Mayor, if I may very quickly, I would just like to publicly thank Mr. Clarence Boone for his support and hard work throughout the years. Mr. Boone was on the Housing Authority Board for fourteen years, and we surely want to thank him, and I know that the mayor is going to thank him as well.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Councilman Brooks. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight zero.
Item eight is just a sunshine item to notify the council of budget amendments of less than ten thousand. There's none to approve this month. And item nine is a consideration of invoices over ten thousand.
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight zero.
All right, Mr. Mayor, before we go, I just want to take a moment. Of course, we have quite a bit of snow and ice and that sort of thing that plagued the West Tennessee area, particularly here in the city, and I just want to say that I want us to show our appreciation this morning to the Jackson folks that got out, scraped all those roads and worked hard, because they did a lot of, lot of hard work and spent a lot of long hours opening this city up, opening the roadways and highways up, so thanks to all those folks that did all that hard work.
Absolutely.
Good job.
I'd like to also thank Mayor, yes, I'm sorry, Mayor. Mayor Carter.
Is this office aging?
I could thank Mayor Carter for yesterday. Yesterday was a great day for our community. Mr. Brooks, Councilman Brooks, Ms. Mercer, and everybody came up, and the whole community came out. I think it was a great event for our community to come together, showing unity, and I think it's going to be events like this that bring our community together, and we continue working together to make a change in our community. So thank you for yesterday, and your committee to put that together.
All right, no further business coming forward to counsel? We're adjourned.
Let me actually...